Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I guess nobody's here wishing to address the board. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of the April 3 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. Motion to approve the agenda, please.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign. That motion carries. No conflicts of interest to deal with. And a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. And that motion carries. And we'll, Todd Tulkey is on his way. He's running just a little bit late. And Kate Parker is unable to attend. So we'll go ahead and get started with the budget. And I'm sure that Todd is well-versed and could have questions when he gets here.
I'll do a short set, just to sell some time here.
All right, thank you.
President Alberti and members of the board. It seems like it was just 364 days ago I was here presenting the FY19 budget. So how time flies when we're having fun. A couple of things, just to kind of start off with. We did prepare this year a potluck report, is what kind of the bean counters call them. But it's a quick, high-level summary of more in a graphical, visual type of format of the key elements in the budget. And probably as I talk through the various categories, I'm actually going to hit on just about everything that's in here. So try to kind of reference you back and point you back to it and help you along with that. Secondarily, I will probably primarily speak off of the executive summary. I tried to embed some tables and some little more detailed fiscal information in there just to kind of keep us in track. The documents that were prepared for the board, obviously that's much more inclusive. That's even a pared-down version of what's even a larger version. But I think through the discussion in this, and if we need to go back into, I have a PowerPoint that kind of hits some of the higher points, we can do that. But I feel fairly comfortable that as I walk through the executive summary, you should have a pretty good understanding of where we're at, what we're proposing with FY20, and some of the different things that make up this budget. So to start that off, probably the first thing I would say is that this budget is calling for the use of some existing reserves to fund our operations throughout 2020. This is primarily related to three what we would tend to view as one-time types of events.
Upstaged.
But what we would view as three kind of extraordinary or one-type events that we're asking for use of the reserves and view that that would be an appropriate use. So those three things are the Terry Avenue extension related to Jefferson High School and the construction of that. The second item is some repairs on the joint-use technology, New Tech High parking lot after Jeff Kreider inspected, he says it's not going to make it. We had it programmed a few years out, but feel we need to do the repairs a little bit sooner. And then the last piece is related to the payouts associated with early retirement. So Bob asked, wanted to make sure I thank you all for the opportunity to use our fund balance for those three events. But they do come into play. Another piece that we're trying to bring into this is part of developing FY20 budget is really looking at where do we think we're going to end up in FY19? And I always say, ask me in August and they'll tell you. But we do need to do some kind of predictive modeling of where we think we're going to be because it comes into play as we go and formulate our FY20. So thinking back a year ago to FY19, that budget was presented on a revenues and expenditures equals. So there was no use of reserves or no planned use of reserves anyway. So as we've progressed throughout the year, we've talked about our decline in enrollment that we had this year over FY18. That certainly had an impact on where we think we're going to end up at the end of this year. So as I factored in all of the revenue estimates and look at all of the expenditure side of things, it looks like we're going to come in with expenditures over the top of revenues of about $778,000. So clearly we were coming into this year not planning on doing that. So we need to address that. And we tried to do that within this budget as well. So when you look at, there's a high-level summary that kind of calls for about $1.6 million in reserves. I think it's on page 12 or so of your handout of your full board documents, page 14, actually. If you look about halfway down on the page, you'll notice that there's two line items there, right in the middle column, and talks about the prior year of the 778 and then the planned use of reserves of 965. So what we're trying to do with that, even though the three projects that I previously identified, Terry Avenue, the parking lot, and the early retirement, combined, those are about $1.5 million. We're trying to drive our FY20 expenditures down below to cover that loss from this year. So that's why you're only seeing a $965,000 use of reserves this year. Another part of the difference, if you were to take those projects and add up this differential, obviously they're not the same. Piece of that comes from the VET Tech. We did raise the half a million dollars in terms of pledges, but those pledges are coming in over a period of years, three to five years on an outlook. So what's recognized in this year's budget is what we believe will receive in those contributions and those pledges for FY20. So that's $233,000. So basically that differential of this 1.7, 1.75 here in those projects, and 1.5 is the fact that we're not getting that whole $500,000 in the first year. We're getting 233 and the rest of it will come in. So we're going to dip down a little bit lower, but we know that money's coming back in to support that overall project. Kind of briefly spoke about enrollments. We've been on a downward decline. Our peak was in FY13. We've talked about this in multiple years, being before you. We had an uptick FY18. Things were looking good this fall as we started out and had some pretty significant shrink and dropage coming into, following the fall term that just carried into the spring as well. So that's why when you look at how we're going to end up in FY19, our expenditures are on track. We're sticking to our budget. We're sticking to our appropriation authority. Where we're falling short and what's creating that deficit, if you almost look at the tuition and the fees and you take up that differential, what I'm projecting, it's almost exactly the $778,000. So it's right in those two categories and not surprising. But it is, I guess what it is, is we relate to FY19. So again, we're trying to cover that in our FY20 expenditures, not putting us in a deeper hole and trying to accommodate that and make adjustments to things that we can make adjustments in as we go to FY20. When we look at revenue projections, when I look at our enrollments, and I think you'll see that on the summary sheet on the inside cover, it talks about, there's a great big percentage there that stands out, talks about 81% of our revenue in FY20 is tied to enrollments. So that's how important they are in our overall revenue stream. So it's not only the tuition and fees that we collect, but also our state aid is based off of enrollments. And it's a somewhat complex formula and how that's done, but it looks at system enrollment, and then it looks enrollment at individual technical institutes, and then it looks at enrollment in specific programs because some get a higher reimbursement than some of the other programs. But going forward, as I go to project credits for FY20, the primary basis for it, as I've said, we've had declining enrollment. We used to kind of do a trend analysis. We'd look three years, five years, sometimes seven years back. Not that I was trying to get the answer I was looking for, but of recent, it's really hard to look at that five-year back window. So what we've been doing is just looking at the recent year, what's trending in the most recent year. We look at some of our preliminary enrollment numbers, participation in our AAR events, and kind of say, all right, am I reasonable in at least saying we're going to hold our own in FY20 based on where we were in FY20 or FY19? And then look at what are these new initiatives that we're bringing forward? So as we look at the credits in FY20, it's really baseline of where I think we're going to end up in terms of FY19. And then we're adding in some new programs that we have coming online. So medical assistance will be something that'll start up this fall. That'll generate some new enrollments. There's a couple initiatives related to dual credit, the AVERA Academy, and then classrooms to careers that is being sponsored by Sanford, City of Sioux Falls, and First Premier. So we're expecting some dual-credit enrollments there, which are helpful in long-term. We're hopefully, that introduces those students to Southeast and then they become fully enrolled in a subsequent year. The other thing is we've got some growth and expansion in our LPN/RN program up in here, and so we're looking to expand that. So there's increases in enrollments based on that, growth in that revenue stream of overall credits. So that's how we look at and formulate that projection as it relates to credits. As we jump in, kind of the next element of it, as we look at it, is what's our impact on the student as we go to this FY20 budget? That's kind of a hot-button topic for everyone that has to, Todd's smiling because we had the same conversation. But as we look at what we charge students and what rates do we establish as we go into the next year? So what this budget is proposing is an $8 per credit across the board increase. $5 of that is set by the State Board of Technical Education. That's for all institutes. That's already been established and approved back in March at $5 per credit. So tuition will go from $116 to $121. The second element that you folks have a say in is what do we charge on a local level? So what we're asking in there is for a $3, or what we're recommending is a $3 per credit increase. So the tuition will increase from 240 to 248 in FY20. That's roughly about a 3.3% increase. We also have some targeted increases related to the LPN and RN programs. We've had in years past, we implemented in FY18, a per-credit charge for those programs, very specific to the LPN/RN courses. So it's not across the board, but just to those prefixed courses, we're increasing that fee from $25 to $50 per credit. Since she's not here, I'll say that has the support of the nursing program director. I think we're still below what other nursing programs charge. And part of this is related to just the ratios that they have to have when they get out into clinical environments. So the cost of delivery is quite a bit higher. You get in a clinical setting, you're looking at an eight-to-one ratio. Where typically, across all our programs, we're in that 17, 18-to-one ratio. So we're passing that cost on to the students that incur it. Another change that you see in there, is we had four programs that were, we were doing a semester-based fee. We're just changing that and going to the same concept as what we're doing with the LPN and RN, and we're going to do a per-credit fee that are specific to their programs. So in HVAC, law enforcement, plumbing, and welding, idea of that from our perspective and from the student's perspective is it should be revenue-neutral for us, expenditure-neutral for them, but it will depend on what their enrollments are in any given year. But the idea is to just charge them for those program-specific courses. Otherwise, somebody taking six credits is taking one semester is going to get hit with that $100. So it has a regressive feature to it. So we're removing that from that stream and just throwing in that per-credit charge. So those are the proposed fee increases that this budget is bringing forward. The other component, as we talk through this, is talking about our staffing level. So when you get into the other side of the equation of revenues being 81% tied to enrollment, when you look at our expense side of it, kind of depending on what capital is in any given year, it's a little bit higher initiative, but our labor costs, our cost of human capital can range anywhere from 65 to 75%. So that's a significant line item, expenditure item. So what's happening with this FY20 budget as it relates to our staff overall? What this budget will do compared to FY19 is a reduction of 3.0 FTE. It's not a forced reduction. It's through attrition, either associated with retirements or resignations. So nobody's being asked to leave. It's just a natural attrition. So we're making some adjustments related to that. And then within the various categories that we have in terms of the administrator and the clerical and all of those types of things, there's adjustments, pluses and minuses, some of them are reclassifications, some of them are just the way that things transpire, some positions that we vacated. But overall, it's a net reduction of 3 FTE. The second thing that comes in with that human capital that we thought bringing forward in a declining enrollment is, how do we look at our investment in that human capital in terms of salary package? What can we do? In a declining enrollment, the simple solution would just be to say, we're holding the line. There's going to be nothing. And it's an easy swipe on the page to do that. So we kind of did some brainstorming and kicking some things around and came back with a proposal that we think provides some incentive, provides some, I don't want to say just short of reward, but tying that compensation adjustment to specific outcomes when we look at our revenue and expenditures in FY20. So what this is really doing is the dollars are programmed in there, but we are not planning an across-the-board adjustment to the salary schedule. So the FY20 salary schedule that we'll present in June will look just like the FY19. What this is really looking at is if we attain our enrollment numbers, and it's not just enrollment, but our revenue overall, the other side of that equation is that we're staying in line with expenditures with what's appropriated here, and we're going to achieve those revenue objectives. We're not falling farther behind. We're looking at some potential lump-sum distributions a couple times throughout the year. So as we go through the year, there's certain points that, all right, I know we're through the fall, we're into the fall term, we know our fall enrollments, we kind of know where we're at, we're seeing what we have for that term melt, we're comfortable where we're going to be at. We think we can go and make that disbursement. Now, we wouldn't unilaterally do that. We'd bring that back before the board as just a communication piece because the appropriation will be there. But we will want to make sure and communicate that and make sure everybody's on the same page, everybody understands. In fact, what we're, yeah. And what happens with it is, is if our fall enrollments fall below where we think we're going to be, obviously we've got someplace to go that we don't have to spend, those dollars are there. So it creates an automatic savings in our expenditure stream that sometimes is very, very hard to do. Once you kind of get rolling in the school year, it's pretty tough to tap on the brakes. So this kind of builds that into there and provides a little bit of a safety net on the expenditure side of things. We'd do the same thing again then in the spring term, too. That's why we would split the distributions. And again, don't know what it's going to look like, but we'll just kind of have to wait and see until we get there. From a staff standpoint, if I was on the other end of it, well, you said the revenue's so high that we'll never achieve them. That's not the case. We feel these revenues are very achievable. Like I said, the methodology is maintaining status quo as far as FY19 projected, and then adding in those new programs that we are building into place. So we think it's a conservative approach, but it also provides some stopgaps along the way. Once we get through the whole fiscal year and we get to this time next year, we kind of know from our year-end projections where we think we're going to wind up. It looks like, based on some AAR involvement for FY21, it looks like everything's on track, everything's holding. Our FY21 schedule may make those adjustments permanent. And so you walk into FY21, it won't be any additional dollars in the FY21 budget because it's already programmed in FY20, and we might come back with the same approach. So I kind of see this as a model going forward that we would look at our compensation until we get on a trend line that looks, you know, like this in terms of enrollments. But it provides us at least that mechanism to tap on the brake, but still provides some incentive for folks and some type of compensation, some type of compensation adjustment as long as we're achieving our revenue goals. So I've probably talked about that longer than we needed to, but just want to make sure it's different than what we've ever done in the past. So it's a kind of a different approach. The FY20 budget, so like I said, we're not making adjustments to the salary schedule, and we're also not funding lane or step increases either. So that'll all have to come in with the revenue projections, at least at this point in time. We'll continue to look at it. We'll continue to look to see what we can do as we move forward. There's folks that have some investment in those lane changes, and there's some folks on those step increases that through some of the other things we've done in years past have fallen behind. So if there's a way in our FY20 budget coming back for the final adoption, that we can find those few dollars to address that going into that, we're certainly going to continue to look at that. We don't have them yet, but we'll keep looking. Where I go next is on the executive summary, kind of jumping into the revenue page. I'm going to kind of circle back around to the impact of Southeast Tech, but it's revenues on this page, fourth page in, on the executive summary. What this is showing is these are our major categories in revenue. So what the FY20 budget is proposing is $25,708,731,000 with the use of existing cash of $965,000, which we've already spoken to. But when you go down and you look at the individual categories, you look at the tuition, increasing the unit cost by $5 per credit, there's some corporate ad increase in there. Really, just that $5 increase brings us back to what the FY19 budget was. Doesn't create a lot of extra. That growth would have to come through enrollment, so hopefully we can achieve that. Fees, same type of thing. The $3 per credit really just brings us back to where we were at in terms of the FY19 budget. State aid, the per-student allocation to the technical institutes went up 2.5%. But again, what we receive is based off of our enrollments this year. So if a downturn in our enrollments carries into that final calculation and how the other techs did, we're not anticipating any overall growth and maybe even a slight decline. But what the budget does include is some one-time money from the state of roughly $410,000. So we've been told by the executive director that that money's there and will be coming our direction. So we programmed that in. We feel pretty confident that'll be realized. Other state revenue is staying the same, and this kind of gives me an opportunity to talk a little bit about that VET Tech. And what we're doing on both the revenue and the expenditure side of it is, that was all programmed in FY19. Took us a little longer to raise the funds, get things in place. So actually, the construction won't incur until start this fall. And so all of the revenues and all the expenditures are actually going to be reflected in FY20 rather than FY19. So I've just carried over and reprogrammed the revenues for the go-add. That money will come right in at the end of the year, and it either will come in as an FY19 revenue, and then I'll do a carryover of those dollars. But we'll see that adjustment as we get a little bit closer. I'm not exactly sure when the state will give us the money for that. Same thing on the expenditure side. So that cost of that program or that construction, that $1.3 million, has been carried over and rolled into the FY20 budget as well. That's why you'll see a variance in, when we look at our projections on our capital. We didn't spend all of the capital, and that was really related to that VET Tech program. Federal sources, minimal changes there. Local sources are reflective of the increase in donations. The VET Tech is going down, but we're also asking the capital campaign, the now campaign through the foundation to support us to a greater extent than what they have. So we've made very specific requests to them. We're asking for funding of the foundation director position. And we're not doing this in a vacuum. We're having discussions with the foundation as well. So we've presented these requests to them. They're aware of them. They just have to go through some of their processes as well. But we're asking for funding for the foundation director's position. We've asked for partial funding of our community relations position. We've asked for some funding related to professional development. We've asked for some funding related to our medical assistant program. The state funds come in arrears. They're always a year behind, so we've asked in lieu of type of payment in support of that program. And I'm drawing a blank on what the other one, oh, there's some potential renovation of the hub area and that upper commons, if you've ever attended an event up there. When we built it, we weren't quite sure how we were going to utilize that space. It's really become a demand for community meetings and presentations. So we're going to look to enclose it, make it a little more of a meeting space and a meeting room. So we feel that fits with some of the donations. And then the dental assisting is the final one. The other thing is related to those requests to the foundation is that we're trying to align those requests with donors so that it makes sense. So dental's the easiest one to talk about. Received a $50,000 donation for Delta Dental. Kind of makes sense to use that towards the expansion of that dental assisting program. Same kind of concept. Electrician Lab is another expansion. Had pretty good donations and support from electrical contractors, electrical supply houses. So we're directing that towards creating growth in that lab, allows for more student enrollments, change those labs around and structure them a little bit differently. So we think they align. The good thing about the foundation accounting is, we do that, so we kind of know where they're at and what we think they'll realize and what resources we'll have available. So we're thinking we're in line with what they should be able to find. But again, ultimately, it's their decision. There's adjustments to that. We'll be talking about it in July. The next table below that speaks to the wages or to the expenditures. So the first category in there is the full-time wages. The big differential there, that $5.36 over last year, is really tied to what's happening with the early retirement payouts. And I won't speak too long to that, but there's a change. What we had had in the past was when one of the two categories that were eligible, either administrators or our instructors selected early retirement, the payouts that they were eligible, and it's based on a percentage of salary and years of service. But the payout of that used to be a stream of payments over a period of five years. Been some changes district-wide level on that payout so that now anybody retiring in FY19 or FY20, those expenditures are recognized in the year in which in which they retire. So FY20, we increased that amount by half a million dollars. That is an estimate that it's not at the high end of what our potential exposure is. It's not at the low end. So it's somewhere in the middle. Unfortunately, we won't know about this until the late winter of 2020. And that'll come into that whole conversation about meeting our objectives and meeting our goals. We think we're on track with that estimate. We'll just kind of have to wait and see. There's roughly 15 instructors that would be eligible. That benefit range is in that $50,000 range. There's two administrators that are eligible. And as I like to say, we're both economic hostages, so I don't think either one of us are going. So but there is that potential related to that. The other thing is we look out in our five-year projections and beyond is that in FY20, the early retirement benefits will sunset. That will be the last year in which we will offer that type of payout. It's just gotten to the point, especially with upfront payouts, just something we can't afford long-term and it continues. So again, change that revenue around, and hopefully we come back with something different, some type of incentive. But that's where we're going with that. So that's the major change in that full-time wage component. Part-time is just some minor adjustments in adjunct, some class consolidation, a little bit different structure in our pay that may result in some savings. We're looking to compensate based off of degree of attainment. So if you have a master's level teaching in field, you're going to be compensated different than someone with a bachelor's or less teaching in field. You have PhD or a doctorate or a doctorate, maybe paid more. So we think there's a little bit of savings to be realized related to that. Service categories, when you look at that, I'll back up on benefits. Benefits are a factor of participation and enrollment. So the budget reflects the increase in the premiums and what individuals are enrolled in. So that's a relatively minor change. Any new positions that we have coming in, because obviously we have people going out, and we're bringing back a few, I always put them in at the highest amount. So usually we have a favorable variance on the benefit side of it, and would anticipate that to carry over. But this is reflective of our maximum composure, our exposure at this point. Services, there's increases kind of across all the categories. There's multiple object codes and accounting terms across that. Most of the increase is kind of equally divided between professional services. So you'll see some increases related to the architectural fees associated with our projects. There's increases in travel, which fall under that professional services, and that's really related to growth and expansion in professional development areas that we're asking the foundation to fund. Some increase in advertising, not only in the marketing aspect of the campus, but also in job announcements, too. Getting pretty expensive to advertise for folks. So and then the final one is some increases in repair and maintenance categories, and most of that's related to service agreements, to new equipment that has been purchased. Supplies, again, a relatively small increase over the FY19 budget. Supplies, classroom supplies, other supplies, we're up about $80,000 in there. And then in non-capital equipment, that's things that don't rise to that threshold of 1,000 and above. We're down a little bit on that. So the net increase is 21, or 64,000. Capital equipment, this budget is nearing what we've done the last couple of years. We've scaled back our capital equipment and really stuck with what the bare necessities are, so to speak. A lot of it's funded through Perkins grants, the majority of it. There's a couple operational pieces. So Eric has some things in his budget to update servers, a few dollars in there. And then I'm at a point where I have to buy more. I haven't bought him one in 15 years, so I need to replace some operational services equipment. So but the majority of it's related to academic programs. Capital improvements, again, talking about those new projects that we're bringing into it. The Terry Avenue was not something that was planned. The Tech Center parking lot wasn't something that was planned. The VAT tech has been reprogrammed in there. And then there's some other odds and ends in there that are reflective of that 1.1 million increase. The other category, what the decline there is primarily related to the Board of Regents' gen ed agreement. So as we have less classes offered, we're going to receive less in reimbursement, so it would affect the revenue side. But on the expenditure side, with declining enrollment, the expenses, the tuition that we collect, we have to send that to the Board of Regents. So with a little bit of downturn in enrollment this year that's carrying over into next year, that's the adjustment in the dues and fees category. Last page is, last couple pages, really talks about the fund balance. We had quite a bit of discussion about this when we met with the council and as they went through and reviewed the budget. And I maybe flip you back to the back page of this as well. You see it in a kind of a summary format. When you look at that high blue highlighted bar across there, you can see what's happening to the fund balance. Obviously, that's not sustainable. It's not a direction that we would go. And when I went to prepare the projections, I mean, you want to really talk about a crystal ball, trying to guess where we're at. I took a very, what I would describe as an ultra-conservative approach on it. So when I looked at the revenue streams, I didn't project any growth in enrollment. I only projected the per-unit increase that we incurred this year, that we're proposing this year, and factored that out. A little bit of growth in dual credit. We think we see some expansion in that, but it's not a huge, huge program. It's not a huge revenue component to it. We only receive the tuition. The fees are waived as part of that program. When you look at the expenditure side of the state aid, I left at the 2.5% increase in the per-student allocation, but the overall money that's coming in is staying relatively the same. So not a lot of changes on there. So what I'm getting at on the revenue side is, is I probably didn't project some revenue growth that we hopefully will see and will be reflected as we go out into these future years. The expenditure side, the ultra-conservative approach to that is to add some growth into that, even though you may not anticipate that. So there's 2% projected growth in each of the full-time wage categories and all of the operating expenditures. Capital programs are reflecting what's in the capital equipment and the capital improvements as we go out. But again, it's very, very conservative, that approach. And when you go back and you look at the snapshot in time, and it's always, you can look at the four years between '14 and '18, I make a comment in the executive summary, revenue has declined by 50 basis points. That's a half a percent. When you look at the expenditures, expenditures have actually gone down over that same period of time. Not a lot, but down three basis points. So I'm anticipating growth in the expenditures when the reality over the last four, five years has not been the case. But I think that's been reflective of what we are having to experience in our enrollments going forward. So as we go to develop these year to year, I can assure you, we will not be bringing a budget in FY21 that calls for a $1.1 million use of the reserves. We just simply won't be able to do that. So we will have to make adjustments. Hopefully, the revenue starts to make that uptick. That makes it a lot easier. It's a lot easier to add revenue than it is to start carving off expenses. So while I prepare a five-year projection, I wouldn't put much stock on what's in FY20. I think it's just going to take, you know, continued diligence and continued review of it as we develop these future budgets until we start to turn some of those enrollment numbers around. Enterprise funds, just a couple of brief comments on that. Those are pretty much status quo from last year. We're continuing the operating subsidy from the post-secondary fund for the food service, 85,000, and then in the childcare fund of 39,000 to support those two programs. Bookstore is self-supporting, and at times will generate a little bit of extra revenue. So that's always a resource for us to look at if we need to. And then the final component on the very last page, and it's even talking in here, is really speaking about program area highlights and initiatives and some of the different things that we are looking to put forth and bring forward in FY20. And I made a comment to Bob as we were looking through this. I said, probably of all the budgets I've done, all 16 of them over the years I've been here, this is probably the one that really ties what we're doing and what we need to do in with what's being reflected in our budget revenue and expenditure streams. So you're seeing a variety of initiatives, academics rolling out new programs, continuing to explore that, which is going to generate growth in enrollment. The enrollment management team is redeveloping our website. That's an ongoing process. There's a new marketing campaign, which Lawrence and Schiller will be spearheading for us. There's some analysis being done with, Megan will kill me for not saying the full name, but Noel Levitz, Ruffalo Noel Levitz, related to search engine optimization and our website utilization and click-throughs. So we're trying to do some things with that. Eric's doing some things on the IT, upgrading servers to keep us current and relevant on that, also expanding on some security things related to two-factor authentication. From Bob's area from the administration, we're restructuring the community industry relations position. We're looking to continue to explore partnership opportunities. We're seeing some of that come to realization this year, the classroom careers partnerships with the City of Sioux Falls, First Premier, Stanford, Avera Academy partnerships with Avera. So we're starting to see that go beyond just that sponsor scholar in that Build Dakota program into our actual support of our operations as well. I'm doing a few things, transitioned to the Obligation Recovery Center. That was some legislation that passed this year that allows us, puts us on the same playing field with other state agencies. So we're using the state collection agency to address some of our outstanding bad debts. Hopefully, we'll see some improvement in that area. A couple of new softwares that were being implemented to support the foundation, support applicant tracking and hiring. So a lot of things going on, a lot of things that are really designed to lend themselves to that bottom line. So that's the long of it or the short of it, as it may be. So kind of hit it pretty fast, a lot of numbers. Kind of talk about, it's hard to talk about budget without talking about numbers, but I tried to provide some visuals related to it and some narrative of what's specifically happening and why. Questions?
Questions for Rich.
I don't know, it's basically questions, but I appreciate the visual. I think it's very helpful to kind of categorize and see things in different ways than just kind of looking at a chart or a graph.
I'll give attribution to Carmen Landis in our marketing department. I put together the numbers, obviously, for her, but she really put together the visual interpretation of what those numbers were. I'm very, very happy with the outcome, and we've had some good positive feedback from it. So there's a few adjustments that need to be made, and we'll probably print a final version after the adoption in July. But I think it's a good, quick resource, especially for talking points for board members at a very high level of what's going on in our budget.
Yeah, and I mean, we never like to hear about shortfalls, obviously, but I appreciate that it seems like you have taken a creative approach, or your team has taken a creative approach to try to not necessarily cut things altogether, but maybe delay that or give some incentive to make it a team effort to meet some of those goals. And so I think that's good to engage people in their work and, you know, trying to retain students and getting them to understand why their education is important and how it's going to impact them long-term as well. So just a little extra motivation for that's helpful.
Well, it's always, it's, nobody wants to stand in front of a group of employees and say, well, you know, no increases this year. Let's try to find a different way. And I think some comments coming out of the council were, this is a team merit approach rather than individual merit, which, you know, may still be an element of it. But it really is not this. As a 32-plus-year employee of different governmental entities, you know, time in the seat was always rewarded historically. This moves away from that and takes on a little bit more of a business model, but still retains some of that, recognizing that we still are a governmental entity, so.
Rich, I don't want to go down in the weeds, but you said one-time money from the state last year. Is that from last year?
No, that's this year.
Okay, so on top of what?
Yeah, yeah. So that total that's reflected in there, that 7.6 million or whatever that is, there's included in that is that 410,000 of one-time money in FY20.
Okay.
So if we were to look at just our formulary calculation, that's dipping down a little bit because I'm anticipating that our enrollment
Will be.
in comparison to the other tax may be, may have fallen less. Now, if we all fall the same, our revenue is going to stay the same. Actually, it'll go up because there's more money in the pot. So
Sure.
it's a goofy calculation, but.
So the other issue, so do we know what's enrollment looking for this fall? Have we heard how that's going? I know we've obviously added back the Avera Academy and Stanford, so that should be helpful in that.
Right. You know, it's still early yet, but when they look at the AAR events, which is when we can compare last year to this year, what's happening, those are holding. They're holding their own. It's fairly consistent and fairly level. So we're on track. We're not seeing that decline, but you know, it's that first day of classes where you really get a sense of it. And then it's after they test drive it for 10 days that you really know where you're at at that 10-day point. So early indicators are, it looks good, but I'm the terrible one to ask about projecting forward like that because I don't want to jinx it. But it does look good right now.
I appreciate also the holding salary levels even until we know where we end up. I think that's really the prudent thing to do, and it does become a team effort. So everybody will benefit some from the increase, if there is an increase in the income. The $5 and $3 for the eight, I, you know, I'll repeat this for the at least 12th time. I hate to see us do increases on the backs of our students, but I think we're at a point where we know what we're getting from the state. That's not going to, that's not going to go up. And we have to keep our doors open. We have to be able to support the programs, and I think that's necessary.
I didn't point it out, but that really hard-to-read line chart down there, really what that's showing is, over time, going back to 2004, is on a per FTE basis, what's the percentage contribution by the student? What's the percentage contribution by the state? So around 2009, they cross and it started going the other way. So you start to see the student's contribution being 65% and the state's contribution on a FTE basis being 35%. And I mean, it's a challenge for the state, obviously. Everybody's looking for additional support. I mean, we're competing with K-12 as well for that support. We're competing with Board of Regents. We're competing with Medicaid. So it's really a challenge to try to find those dollars. And clearly, enrollment is the best way to do that. But again, that doesn't change these percentages, but it helps our revenue line. I just point out, I actually kind of liberated that chart from the Board of Regents' annual report that they do. There's, looks very similar.
The other thing that I think we can't ignore and can't pretend isn't going on is, speaking to the Board of Regents, the plan that they've just sort of slid out there to turn the university center into a community college. And that, to me, is going to be something that we as a board and going forward, everybody else, since I won't be on the board. But that's something that has to be monitored extremely closely. And we, as a tech institute, as a school board, need to make sure that we watch carefully that we don't have duplication of efforts, that we don't have competing programs that are sitting at institutions that are a mile and a half apart. So, you know, it's exciting for the Board of Regents to push this out, but it's concerning to me, to be honest. to me, to be honest.
Well, and I think the discussion centers around that, and I think the major talking point that we've had both internally and externally is we want to partner, but we don't want to duplicate. We don't want to get into their business. We don't want them duplicating our programs. And hopefully, we can look for ways to partner, look for ways for more opportunities for two plus two. But I'll say that's academics, not the finance guys' conversation to have and to lead that charge. But clearly, it has an impact on what I do and our organizational and our fiscal health of it. So, you know, obviously, we have our ear to the ground and we'll continue to dialogue with USD and the Board of Regents on that, so. But it's a justifiable concern.
Any other questions on the presentation? You did an adequate job.
Adequate job.
You did a very good, you did a very good, no, you did a very good job. And it's a tough year. When we're dipping into the reserves the way we are, I appreciate the efforts of the entire management team, the fact that you've taken the numbers out to the instructors, to the staff, what, I think three different times at least. You know, that's the kind of work that I think makes a tough budget year a little easier to live with because everybody knows what's coming at them, and there aren't surprises. So I appreciate the effort that you've made and everyone else in making sure that we're as transparent as possible, so.
I think especially two of those large expenditures that weren't expected are investments in our future and our financial stability. One being the retirement, you know, we're taking care of that to make sure we don't have that hanging out forever. And the road between Jefferson High and us, I just see so much opportunity, hopefully.
I do have some property for sale, though, if somebody would.
All right. And this is a public hearing on the budget, so I'm opening it up now for anyone who's here from the public to address us. And since it's just us here, unless anyone has opposition, we'll close the public hearing portion of this and ask for a motion to tentatively approve the budget, knowing that this will come back before the board in July for final approval and adjustments that will need to be made between now and then can be made and will be, final approval action will be taken at our first meeting in July.
Yeah, your end of meeting in July will be back before you again.
So you weren't into.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. And now we have policies, and we have a bunch of them. And thank you to Vicky for preparing a cheat sheet for me on that. Item nine, those policies A through K, and I'm not going to read every one of them. We can all read and see what they are. Every one of those are updating language to current practice. It's perhaps changing STI, the Southeast Tech, in language. It's really very minor language changes, and I would move approval of review revised for nine, A through K.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. And then item 10, we have three policies in item 10, and unless there's opposition, we'll take them all three as first read. First one is GBE slash STI. It's a nepotism policy. It does reflect significant rewarding and removing of outdated language to that policy. Policy committee felt that there was enough change that we should have that as a first read, and then the second reading on these three would come back before the board on July 8th. Then the second one is KLC, STI and its accompanying regulation. Social service agencies investigating child abuse have been updated and reflects separation of social services and law enforcement investigation. And again, significant enough change that we thought that should be a first read. And then the third one is IV slash STI and its accompanying regulation. And Academic Freedom Act has been drafted to provide guidance for the campus community to promote excellence in teaching and learning and preserve freedom of expression. And that's a new policy that was drafted, and we did spend a significant amount of time on that one at a couple of different meetings.